Good evening. Welcome to this candidate's forum for the Croton-Harmon School Board. My name is Susan Maggiato. I'm the president of the League of Women Voters of the Rivertowns. This forum is co-sponsored tonight by your PTAs, and we thank them very much for their participation. First, I'd like to tell you just a bit about the League of Women Voters. The League was founded in 1920, the year the 19th Amendment was passed, granting women the right to vote. For over 100 years, the League has been a nonpartisan political organization that encourages informed and active participation in government. This forum is a good example of that effort. As I said, the League is nonpartisan. We do not support or oppose candidates or political parties, but we do work to increase understanding of major public policy issues, and we seek to influence public policy through education and advocacy. Membership in the League is open to anyone 16 years of age or older. This forum will be recorded and available for later viewing. There will be links on the Rivertowns League website and Facebook page and the school district website to the location on YouTube. A word about our recording policy that all the candidates have agreed to. Only entities authorized by the League may record or livestream this forum. Only licensed media, including TV, radio, and newspapers, are entitled by FCC regulations to air portions of the recording. Anyone else who broadcasts or streams it must do so in its entirety. Now I'd like to introduce our moderator. Leah Dempitzer is a resident of Scarsdale and the immediate past president of the League of Women Voters of Scarsdale. She is currently the PTA president at Scarsdale Middle School. And with that, I will turn the forum over to Leah.
Thank you, Susan. Good evening and welcome to all who are viewing from home. I hope that you and your families are well. As Susan said, I'm a past president of the League of Women Voters of Scarsdale. I'm a current member there. I'm pleased to serve as your moderator this evening for the Croton-Harmon Candidate Forum. I want you to know that I do not live in your district. I don't know the candidates or the issues facing your school community. The League of Women Voters is a grassroots volunteer, nonpartisan political organization whose mission is to help inform voters and encourage civic engagement. The League has been hosting candidate forums in communities and states across the country for decades. We organize these forums so that voters have an opportunity to hear from the candidates on the local issues that affect their lives. The League hopes that this forum will help voters make an informed choice at the polls. There are four candidates for two seats on the Croton-Harmon School Board: Greg Burns, Kathy Connolly, Joshua Diamond, and Theo Oshiro. The speaking order of candidate opening statements, as drawn from a lot by the moderator, is as follows. Number one, Joshua Diamond. Number two, Theo Oshiro. Number three, Kathy Connolly. Number four, Greg Burns. The closing statements will be given in the reverse order. Opening statements will be a maximum of one minute. Following the opening statements, there will be a question and answer portion. Questions were submitted by the public prior to the event and were reviewed by a committee of the Croton-Harmon PTA and the Rivertowns League. There will be no live questions from the audience during the event. The candidates did not see the questions prior to the forum. I will address each question to all candidates, and each candidate will have a maximum of one and a half minutes to respond to each question. The order in which candidates will respond will be rotated to ensure fairness. Each candidate will be allowed two rebuttals during the course of the event. Rebuttal time will be 30 seconds. There will be no responses to rebuttals allowed. During closing statements, I may request a rebuttal if I deem it appropriate. The candidates will not interrupt one another or the moderator during the forum. I will pause proceedings if necessary to enforce the ground rules and the format. Following in the question-and-answer period, all candidates will give a closing statement, and the time limit for the closing statement is one minute. The timekeeper this evening is Yura Moen. She will hold up a 30-second stop sign, a 30-second sign, excuse me, when there are 30 seconds of time remaining. Yura, would you like to show the 30-second sign? Great. And a stop sign when time is up. Thank you. When time is up, candidates may finish the sentence they have started. Yura will remain visible on the screen, and I will enforce the time limits. I would also like to emphasize that any response or statement that is a personal attack or of hostile nature will be considered out of order. Except for time limits, the only restriction on candidate statements and answers is respect and civility. So we will now begin with opening statements. Everyone has one minute. We will begin with Joshua Diamond. You may go ahead.
Good evening. I'm here tonight because while our schools already receive accolades and our students are successful, I know that there is still work to do. We must provide students with basic knowledge, but also teach them to be creative problem solvers, effective team members, powerful leaders, compassionate friends, and critical thinkers, so that they may affect their families, community, nation, and the world for good. We must provide every student, regardless of identity, history, or circumstances, with a foundation for success. I'll support proven pedagogical practices, and I will always stand up for academic freedom, freedom of expression, and freedom from censorship. I will continue to collaborate with the board and administration to ensure that our community's tax dollars are spent wisely, balancing proper funding for education with fiscal responsibility. I will always speak out for doing what is best for our students, and I look forward to answering your questions tonight.
Thank you. All right, we will now go to Theo Oshiro. Theo, you have one minute. Go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Theo Oshiro, and I have two wonderful daughters who attend CET. And I'm grateful for and proud of the quality education and resources that they have access to here in Croton. But I believe that public education will always be a work in progress. We are at a crucial moment. Many of us feel demoralized about the state of unpredictability of our world, but we are also keenly aware that there are many problems to solve. One thing is clear: our youth will be the solution to our challenges and the caretakers of our future. I'm running for the board because I believe that building strong public schools is key to what we need in our world. We can collectively raise compassionate children who are critical thinkers and are brave enough to face history and learn from it. We can nurture a district that sees the ability and uniqueness of every child and harnesses their power, and we can achieve an environmentally sustainable future together. I'm running for BOE to use all of my skills as a social justice leader to foster a school system that nurtures our whole community.
Thank you. All right, now we go to Kathy Connolly. You have one minute.
Hi. I'm Kathy Connolly. I was born and raised here in Croton, and like many Crotonites, I moved away, but only to find that after I had children, I reflected on what a wonderful community Croton is and how important it was for me to raise my children here. So my husband Jimmy and I moved back in 2014 to raise our children, Ben and Addison, who are 13, and Dylan, who is nine. I decided to run for the board for the simple reason of getting involved with my community and to having a better connection, a deeper connection with it. So I thought, what better way than in an area where my children spend the majority of their time? My husband coaches a lot. I don't have an athletic bone in my body, but I do have a knack for probing questions and understanding all sides of an issue. And I do believe our board's primary role is to teach our children academics, but enveloped by a strong social network involving the arts, sports clubs, and sports and clubs. And we want to ensure that every child is not just getting by, but living up to their fullest potential. Thank you.
All right, now we will go to Greg Burns. You may go ahead. You have one minute.
Hi, everyone. My name is Greg Burns. I've been a resident of Croton along with my wife Julie for eight years. We have two kids, a fifth grader and a seventh grader in PVC. Since we moved into the community, I've become more involved as a person or holy name. I've been coaching my kids' teams their whole lives. Recently became a member of the Knights of Columbus, but now, you know, I could think of no more important way to volunteer my time than as a trustee on the Board of Education. So with that in mind, as a trustee, I will focus our schools on academic excellence and strive to ensure that every student has a pathway to success, support fiscally responsible budgets that maximize the benefit to our schools and communities and minimizes the tax impact on the community, promote accountability, transparency, and parental involvement, and foster a culture that celebrates our universal humanity.
Thank you. Now we will move into our questions. So question number one, we'll go first to Greg Burns. So, Mr. Burns, what do you think the role of a school board member is? You have a minute and a half.
So I think as a school board member, I'm a big believer in transparency for parents and the community as a whole. I think the board really serves the community best when it's accessible and responsive to parents' ideas and concerns. But I also think that the board works best when it's providing proper oversight that incorporates the view of the broader community and thoughtfully questions administration, providing proper oversight and accountability between all stakeholders in the community.
Thank you. All right. Kathy Connolly, you're number two. Ms. Connolly, what do you think the role of a school board member is? You have a minute and a half.
Okay. The board's focused on the end results of the district's visions, goals, and policies. So we are a representative of the community. We are a fiduciary to responsible to oversee the district's resources. We are advocates. We are advocates for the children, for the taxpayers, for public education in general. We determine the policy for the district, and we hire the superintendent. I think it's important that we help our community fully understand the different roles that everyone plays here, because I think that sometimes people think that board does certain things that they don't. And so helping the community understand whose job is to do what, I think, is also really important for the success of the board and the community.
Thank you. Okay, now it goes to Joshua Diamond. Mr. Diamond, what do you think the role of a school board member is?
Well, as others have mentioned, the principal roles of a school board are the fiduciary role in that we control the finances and propose a budget. We hire a superintendent and administration and sign off on the hiring of faculty and staff. And we serve in a disciplinary role, in that we serve as the highest court of appeal for disciplinary matters. And we set policy. Most recently, we set code of conduct, did updates to code of conduct. But in a broader sense, really what the board does is think about mission and vision, and all of those things serve to implement the mission and vision of the district. And that's really important as we start to embark on our strategic coherence plan updates for the next five years. We've just come off of a five-year plan. It's time to revise that plan for the next five years. And what we come up with in the process of that planning process is going to dictate how our policy evolves. It's going to dictate the way we do hiring. It was in our minds as we hired the new superintendent that we just hired.
Thank you. Okay, we go to Mr. Oshiro. What do you think the role of a school board member is?
Thanks, Leah, for the question. I mean, I think first and foremost, a school board member has to be an excellent listener, right, of our parents, of our young people, or all the stakeholders that care about our children and our schools. And it's really one of the best ways to make change, actually, in a very local way, right? We're all trying to figure out, how do we grapple with this world that we're seeing right now and experiencing, right? And a school board is one of the most kind of practical and, I would say, inspiring ways to make change at a very local level to help our young people thrive and our families thrive. And we, you know, the school board tackles a lot of hard issues, right? You have to be someone that can really look at systems and policies and leverage them to make actual things happen. And I believe the Board of Education is also, should be a supporter of the administration, right, and help the administration carry out what's a very difficult task, right, of nurturing our young people post-pandemic on the precipice of so much change. So, you know, that's the kind of board member that I want to be.
Thank you. We're going to the second question, and we'll go first to Kathy Connolly. Ms. Connolly, what two things would you change in this school district?
Oh, what would I change? Well, I do think that we are doing a lot of things, are doing a lot of things really well. So I'd hate to focus on the negatives, but I think one of the areas that we've been looking at and talking to the principals this week is to deal with the social and emotional well-being of the child. So this seems to be an important topic that we're taking seriously. And I know my son benefits greatly from his many hours with Ms. Beja. So again, I'd like to focus on all the things that we're doing well. I don't think we're doing anything drastically terrible that we need to deconstruct the system. I think there's always ways that we can get better. So, I mean, I would like to focus, if I got elected, on what we're doing better. I really want to make sure that we are looking at the loss of education that's transpired. Studies have showed that a loss of education has transpired because of the pandemic, and understanding that loss, to better understand it and deal with it, is something that I have to, that we need to look at seriously and making sure that we focus on all the things that we've been focusing on, that making sure we're raising critical thinkers and people that are respectful to their elders and to their peers. And I look forward to doing that.
Thank you. All right, the question goes next to Joshua Diamond. Mr. Diamond, what two things would you change in the school district?
The first thing that I think we need to do in our school district is we need to take the success that most of our students are experiencing and broaden it. That is broaden it to more students, to find the students that are not being served as effectively as they possibly could. That might mean students with special needs. That might mean students that have different family backgrounds or different challenges. We need to expand it so that we are serving every child according to their needs and every child according to their aspirations, what they hope to do in life. The other item that I feel that we need to spend some time working on is addressing the teenage mental health crisis that exists today. We need to address it with supports for students that interrupt dissolution with hope, replace depression with opportunity, and transform demoralization into excitement and possibility. The impact of the pandemic is real, but these are issues that started to exist even before the pandemic, and we really do need to look at them very carefully and make sure that we are supporting our students in their mental and emotional and social health.
Thank you. Okay, next it goes to Theo Oshiro. Mr. Oshiro, what two things would you change in the school district?
Well, I was amazed when I was first introduced to the district, all of the amazing resources and just talented individuals that make part of our district and our schools. I just felt so lucky, right, that I would be able to give my daughters that experience and as a result of just so many talented professionals that are here in the district. You know, I do believe that building on the Equity Stakeholder Team's recommendations very recently is one of the most important things that we can do for our young people. You know, I grew up as an immigrant in this country, and I know from firsthand experience how difficult it can be for our young people if they don't see themselves in their schools, in their materials, and if they don't feel like they belong part of a community. And so I think it is a huge priority to build on the Equity Stakeholder recommendations, to look at family engagement, school climate consciousness, hiring and retention with a DEI lens. And I also think we have to do a better job of engaging the limited English proficient community and immigrant communities that are here in Croton as well. And then finally, you know, I agree that we've all been through so much during this pandemic. Many of our families have been through a lot pre-pandemic, and we have to double down on social emotional wellness and learning. You know, I think use of mindfulness practices and peer-to-peer coaching and things like that is crucial for our young people.
Thank you. Okay, now goes to Greg Burns. Mr. Burns, you may go ahead.
So I'd like to, obviously, echo a lot of the sentiments that have already been expressed. We're obviously a high-performing school district, so I don't think that we need necessarily radical change. Rather, I think we should be constantly promoting a process of what I think of as like continuous improvement, looking for those little incremental ways that we could constantly get better. So first and foremost, we don't have the most recent data, but I do, you know, think there's, I would assume there's probably been some slippage in academic performance due to the pandemic. So recommitting to academics, I think, is all the more important, and we should really be looking for any ways we could support our students to embrace their basic math and ELA proficiency. Secondly, you know, when I think of, you know, ways individual, maybe, schools can improve, you know, you look at new teaching methods like project-based learning. You know, I don't think you can move away specifically from teacher-directed learning. I still think that is important, but I think some of these other newer methods have merit. My wife is a fifth-grade teacher. I've seen her pilot this program in her classroom. It really brings the class alive, and I think things like that, looking for new ways to engage our students, find ways to really, you know, promote a lot of the SEL things through learning is something that the district should look for. And then just another one-off for the older kids, you know, I know we've seen some success in the Regeneron Science Fair, things like that, but I know other local schools have had much more success. So maybe that's an area that, you know, we could provide more resources to our students for their achievement.
Thank you. All right, the third question, we'll go first to Joshua Diamond. Mr. Diamond, how would you ensure that your decisions are grounded in the best interests of students rather than your personal opinions?
It's really easy. All I need to do is think about what the impact on the student will be. That means listening to the advice of the pedagogical experts, listening to the administration when they're telling us. They are the experts in pedagogy, and, you know, we have to listen to that. We hire them because they are experts. So that's part of it. Part of it is doing research and actually going to the numbers, going to the data that we get in each annual report. Part of it is going out and talking to parents, talking to students. One of the great things that I've been able to do this year is be on the student faculty, be the board representative to the high school student faculty congress. Getting out there and talking and hearing, most importantly, listening, is how I can make sure that I'm acting in the best interest of the students. And that means listening to the teachers, listening to the administration, listening to the students, and doing my research, reading, and understanding what the current best practices are and how we can best serve our students.
Thank you. Okay, the question now goes to Theo Oshiro. Mr. Oshiro, how would you ensure that your decisions are grounded in the best interests of students rather than your personal opinions?
Yeah, no, I think, you know, not a vastly different answer from what Josh has just stated, but I agree that it is so important to be a really, really good listener, right, and make sure that first and foremost, we're listening to parents, to young people, to community members, to really all the stakeholders that have anything to do with our district and our schools. You know, obviously, we all bring our sets of values, right, and things we care about in the world, and I think it's important to be true to those things, but never to kind of make up your mind from the very beginning, right? I've had a lot of experiences in my work where I think, you know, the way forward is one way, and then my mind changes because, you know, listening to people actually impacted by the issues changes my mind, right? And so for me, I'm very open to changing my mind and listening to people and really gathering all the data and coming first and foremost to every board meeting with just thinking about our kids, right, our kids in our schools, who we all want the best for.
Thank you. The question now goes to Greg Burns. Mr. Burns, how would you ensure that your decisions are grounded in the best interests of students rather than your personal opinions?
Yeah, thanks for the question. So, you know, I realize, you know, obviously, I have my own opinion, but I realize that it is not the only opinion. So, you know, echoing Josh and Theo, I think listening is key, listening to all the stakeholders. I'm a big proponent of transparency and accountability to the parents to make sure they have a voice. All families have a voice in the district. And I think a district where you have a balanced set of viewpoints on the board could come to more middle-ground positions and outcomes that I think will ultimately be better for the students and the community as a whole. So, you know, that's certainly something that I would look to foster if I'm on the Board of Education.
Thank you. The question now goes to Kathy Connolly. How would you ensure that your decisions are grounded in the best interests of students rather than your personal opinions?
So I think it is so important to hear from all sides, and I don't think I'm so rigid in my approach or about how to attack a subject that I'm not just, not just open to listening, but really considering what other people are saying and reflecting and not assuming you understand what's, like, really putting yourself in their shoes and understanding all sides. I also think I'd want to encourage the community to come out and lend their voice, because the only way we understand other people's opinions is if they show up at the board meetings and they write letters. So, again, I think listening to all the sides, truly trying to take into their consideration of what is best for the children is the best approach, and I think I'm well-equipped to do that.
Thank you. Okay, just a general reminder, you do have two rebuttals. And throughout, if you would like to rebut at any point after everyone's answered, you may raise your hand. Okay, so we will move on to question number four, and the question goes first to Theo Oshiro. Mr. Oshiro, what are your thoughts regarding the use of social media as a means of board communication, and should the board develop a policy on it?
Wow, so social media is an extremely, extremely powerful tool. Our young people are more advanced than parents on social media, and it is one of the most crucial ways that I think has been developed in recent history that is about getting the word out to people, to families on important issues, important events, and really just, you know, grappling with our world, right? And so I think that, yes, social media, it's always good to have kind of policies around how the district will engage around social media and really best practices. There's a lot of talent around social media in our community and technology, the use of technology in general to bolster learning and our understanding of our world. I don't think it should be the only thing and the only mechanism, right, because we know there are many who are not on social media. But I know that it is definitely a powerful tool that we should harness as a district.
Thank you. The question now goes to Greg Burns. Mr. Burns, what are your thoughts regarding the use of social media as a means of board communication, and should the board develop a policy on it?
Yep, obviously, I'm one of those people that aren't historically big on social media. I've definitely delved more into it now as part of this process, and I realize it is a powerful tool for communicating. And as a board member, I would definitely seek to use any tool that is, you know, to, any tool necessary to really execute the job to its fullest. I also think, you know, like Theo said, that's not the only way, you know. We should have, you know, in-person contact with the community and provide, you know, many multiple avenues of communications. I also think maybe there should be some kind of anonymous way for parents, students, teachers to communicate with the board, because I think sometimes, you know, putting your name out there restricts some of what people might say. So, you know, if we are able to do that, that might be a way to get a truer picture on what's happening in the schools. And then in terms of policy or regulations around it, yeah, I certainly think there should be some kind of limits around it. You shouldn't just be able to say whatever you want if you're, you know, if you're representative of the community in the Board of Education in an official capacity.
Thank you. The question now goes to Kathy Connolly. Ms. Connolly, what are your thoughts regarding the use of social media as a means of board communication, and should the board develop a policy on it?
I'm fine if the board, if people are asking for other ways to get communication from the board, and that's what people are asking for, I'm all for it. We are inundated with emails from all different levels of the schools, and especially if you have kids in multiple schools, and then one from the superintendent, another one from the principal, and so it can get hard to keep on top of all of these emails that we get. I think it's low on the priority level. I'm not on Facebook all day, you know, but if, or I'm sure there's other more hip forms of social media. But I actually think a better way to, if... a better way to, if, is if there was a text message system, because sometimes, you know, you want to show up to a board meeting, but again, the email to remind you is 20 emails down. So if people were to opt into a text message and they get it on their phone, I would actually appreciate that more. And of course, if we do it, yes, we should have a policy, but I don't think it should be that time-consuming where we take away from things that are, in my opinion, bigger priorities.
Thank you. The question now goes to Joshua Diamond. Mr. Diamond, what are your thoughts regarding the use of social media as a means of board communication? And should the board develop a policy on it?
I, I think that social media is important. In fact, I think that multimedia is important. We need to meet our constituents, meet our taxpayers, meet the parents, meet our community and meet our students, not where we think they are, but where they actually are. And right now, for better or worse, that means social media. And it's a very diffuse beast, because there are so many different platforms and they are evolving so quickly and their audiences change so quickly. So yes, I do think it's vitally important, because otherwise we're going to miss important parts of our community. We're not going to reach them. So I think it is important as a, as a channel for communication. And in fact, it's something the district's already been working on. And actually has members of staff who spend some of their time each month working on that. As for whether there should be a policy, I absolutely think that there should be a policy concerning this that makes the distinction between what is official communication and what is personal communication. The distinction between communication on behalf of the district versus communication that is of a personal nature and subject to the rules that allow free speech.
Thank you. And we're going on to question number five, and this will go first to Greg Burns. Mr. Burns, what is your approach to building consensus on the board?
Yeah, I think I answered that a little bit earlier. It's kind of similar type question, but I, I really think that, you know, I, I have my own view, but it's not, it's not the only one. And I am, you know, willing and open to listen to the other views to come to a consensus. I really think that in the middle is where we're going to have the most successful, long-lasting impact or outcomes for the community where, you know, all sides feel like they've been heard. It, it shouldn't be controversial what's happening in the schools. And I think if you are able to take viewpoints from all sides, you'll come to, like I said, a more, a more palatable or a, a solution that works for everyone.
Thank you. Okay, the question now goes to Kathy Connolly. Ms. Connolly, what is your approach to building consensus on the board?
So I, I think my years, I've, I've been working as a real estate agent for about 17 years. So I think that's provided me with a lot of negotiation skills that will help bring all the sides together on a common ground. So I don't believe in bullying anybody to, to get everything that you want, but I think that it's best when, when both sides feel like they've had something, that they've gained something in the process. Again, every, everybody has to feel leaving the table like they've won something. And I think, you know, listening, again, it comes back to communication and listening and, and really hearing what the other side says to, to come together and collaborate together.
Thank you. Okay, the question now goes to Joshua Diamond. Mr. Diamond, what is your approach to building consensus on the board?
Well, I think the first key to consensus is doing your homework. It's really important to have an idea of what is being discussed and really research it and be prepared for that board meeting. When you arrive, you want to be able to talk with some knowledge and speak from, with knowledge of the, of the topic that's being discussed. Once you have that, that provides the common, the common foundation for the discussion. We're all starting with that same information. And part of that means if you find something new, sharing it with your fellow board members. So you can have a discussion and you can listen to each other and share your understanding of it. And also being willing to shift. It's not always necessary to come into exact agreement. Often it's enough to just come into alignment. Agreement means totally 100% in agreement. But alignment means this is good enough to get us to where we intend to go, what we want to do and, and be in, you know, in concert with the mission and vision of the district, so that we are serving the students. If we keep that in mind, then coming into agreement as a board is not hard. It's easy because we're thinking about the students and we're using the homework that we did to help us get there.
Thank you. Okay, the question now goes to Theo Oshiro. Mr. Oshiro, what is your approach to building consensus on the board?
Thanks, Leah. Yeah, I mean, I think in my job, you know, leading the, the nonprofit I lead, building consensus with large groups is a key part of my job, whether it's with, you know, large groups of staff or, you know, coalitions made up of elected officials and other organizations and other stakeholders. And it's actually a really hard, hard work to build consensus, right? And it's important that you set up the right spaces for conversation, that you have the right tools available for people to understand the materials and, and the information in front of them. And most importantly, that everyone feels heard, right? Even if at the end of the day, not everyone gets exactly what they want, if everybody feels heard and gets to a conclusion together, you know, only, only in that way can you then move as a collective towards a common goal, right? And so that's the approach that I want to bring to the board to, to be a facilitator of communication, to make sure that everyone feels heard, to do my homework and, and, and take on a really collaborative approach, because at the end of the day, the board needs to make decisions and carry out those decisions collectively.
Thank you. Okay, now we're up to the sixth question. This question will go first to Kathy Connolly. Ms. Connolly, what do you see as the relationship between academic learning and social emotional learning in our schools?
It is really important. And I was so glad over the last few weeks, I've been meeting with principals and administrators and many people in, in, at the school. So I've actually learned a lot about understanding that connection and how seriously the school is taking it. So I was really impressed with saying, a child can't be in the space to learn if they're not in the right emotional, in the right emotional space. So they have to feel good about their space and, and before they can be open to the process of learning. So I, I think having school psychologists on hand, the mood reader that Mr. Plackton talks about, it's constantly reinforced, at least from what I'm seeing, that this is an important aspect. They're, we're not taking it lightly. We're taking it quite seriously. And I do believe that, again, if we need, if we look at each child on an individual basis, everybody comes to school with a different, a different story. And we have to understand what that story is to help make sure that they're in the right place to learn.
Thank you. The question now goes to Joshua Diamond. Mr. Diamond, what do you see as a relationship between academic learning and social emotional learning in our schools? Oh, you're muted.
Thank you. Social and emotional learning related topics include bullying prevention, drug abuse prevention, stress management, suicide and self-harm prevention, support for, for student emotional self-regulation. So it gives kids coping schools to deal with the tough personal, social, mental and emotional issues that they encounter. And it gives teachers and school administrators tools that they could use to get those things out of the way of learning. So that the student feels good about being in school and feels good about their ability to achieve when they're at school. And it helps them to become kind, caring and supportive friends and creates opportunities for students of differing backgrounds to work together to solve in-school and out-of-school issues. It's, it's sort of the water in which students swim. If they're healthy and happy and comfortable in their bodies, comfortable in their emotional state at school, they are going to be more receptive to learning. They're going to be more able to work to learn together with their peers. And they're going to have joy in learning.
Thank you. Okay, the question now goes to Mr. Oshiro. What do you see, what do you see as the relationship between academic learning and social emotional learning in our schools?
I mean, I think there's such an important connection there. And I really don't see how you can do quality academics without a focus on social emotional learning. You know, I've seen with my own daughters, right, the, the kind of ways in which, you know, emotions are really just inextricably connected to, to learning, right? Whether they, they get super frustrated because they feel they can't do something or they're not good at something, right? And what we say as parents to them in those moments and as educators in those moments is so, so important to their ability to, to, to do that work and to be confident in themselves in general. I was, I was reading the, some of the work of the Social Emotional Learning Committee in the district and some of the guiding principles there. And, and I was happy to see that it, it really focused not only on what, what our students need, but also how teachers and parents see at, at the same time that they need the same things, right? So the ability to reflect on one's own self, right? And, and, and how to be compassionate human beings. I, I would say is also is just as important for us as parents, as us as educators, so that our, our young people can have a, a truly robust academic experience.
Thank you. And the question now goes to Mr. Burns. What do you see as the relationship between academic learning and social emotional learning in our schools?
Sure. So I, I, I feel like anything that's going to be independent or detract from a student's ability to learn, to feel comfortable in their school environment, obviously would take away from their academic experience. So addressing those through social, emotional, personal skill and character development is absolutely necessary for them to, to have academic success. I, I would say that I, I think there, there is a risk that it becomes broader than it needs to be, you know, it, and, you know, we need to, like any tool, I think there is value in it and it provides, you know, a foundation for success for the students. And we should certainly be promoting it and, and promoting the, the development of our kids in that fashion. But, you know, there is a risk, like with any other tool, that it, it becomes too broadly applied. It takes away from, you know, it can potentially take away from academic endeavors if, if it's taking teachers' time to teach, you know, social emotional lesson and they don't have time, you know, maybe in their schedule how to fit in math or it takes, or it's being incorporated into some of these other things where, you know, you're teaching social emotional instead of math. So I do think it has value and should be in the schools. But, you know, we have to be careful that it's used, applied properly.
Thank you. And we're going on to, oh, yes, you have one to rebut, Mr. Diamond. You have 30 seconds.
Please. I, I'd like to comment on the idea that social emotional learning takes away from academic, could potentially take away from academic instruction. I think I'd argue that if a student is not in an emotional state to be receptive to instruction, then it's more, more important to address that emotional state and to address the, the blocker, the thing that is getting in the way of their instruction promptly, so that the instruction can continue, so that they can be effective in the classroom.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Oshiro, you'd like to rebut?
Yeah, I, I totally agree with, with Josh on this one. And, and, and I feel like they're not, social emotional learning doesn't have to be seen as a, as a, as a topic, right? Or a silo. Our young people experience the world in many different ways and varying different levels. And social emotional learning needs to be part of the academic experience, interwoven through all aspects of, of the academic life.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Burns. You'd like to rebut as well?
Yeah. So, I mean, I think, you know, to, to what Josh said, you know, in those situations, the teachers should address it as it comes. You know, that's typically how schools have historically worked. Child has a problem, you address the issue in real time. It's probably more impactful than just speaking esoterically through a lesson. And in terms of Theo's rebuttal, you know, I, I think you're getting social emotional through multiple different vectors, through, through your home, your churches or other religious institutions, sports and sporting clubs. There's no end to where kids are getting social emotional support.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to question number seven. This is going to go first to Joshua Diamond. What ideas do you have for how to make the district more environmentally sustainable?
So some of these are things that we're already doing, and some of these are things that I think we could lean into more. So first of all, the district's already embarked on an energy performance contract. We put a lot of effort into that over the past few years, and it's already starting to make a difference. This is actually our second energy performance contract. We had one before that. And it makes a really big distance difference in the environmental impact of our buildings, energy utilization. And that, we've also done things where we're, we're talking about the idea is to use less, that is, reduce the amount of paper that is used, reduce the amount of waste that comes out of our school buildings. The other side of this, of course, is transportation. We want to lean in, I want to lean in on electric buses. I think that that is the way of the future. We already know that New York State has an initiative to get to full electrification of school bus fleets. We need to do that in a way that is fiscally responsible, but at the same time leaning into the effort as much as possible, so that we can reduce the impact to the environment, reduce the impact to the health of the kids that are riding those buses, and provide healthy alternatives to riding to school in an individual vehicle or on a diesel bus.
Thank you. The question now goes to Mr. Oshiro. What ideas do you have for how to make the district more environmentally sustainable?
Yeah, I mean, I, I truly believe that, you know, we're facing an existential threat from, from climate change and that change on that front can really be led by our young people and our schools. You know, on the electrification of buses, I, I am a, a huge supporter of making sure that we explore all possibilities to, to, to electrify our fleet as efficiently and as quickly as possible. We got to keep, make sure to keep up with evolving technology, because it seems like year to year, there's new technology that could make this a possibility, even more of a possibility here in the district, looking at charging infrastructure. We also have to infuse, continue to infuse our curriculum with environmental sustainability topics, right? Our young people need to understand what's at stake right here with climate change and our environment. And we have to work with community partners, you know, like Mothers Out Front and Quoten 100 and every group really to understand what the options are and to work collaboratively. So I think our district can lead on this. Our young people and our parents and the Board of Education can lead on this issue. And there's, yes, a lot of state programs. I'm, I'm used to pushing the state government to deliver resources to communities, and that's something that needs to happen on the environment as well.
Thank you. The question now goes to Mr. Burns. What ideas do you have for how to make the district more environmentally sustainable?
Okay, so I don't, I don't know if, if the district has this ready, but potentially the, the, the board in concert with the, the administration, maybe putting in sustainability goals, specific goals to achieve, whether it's, you know, reducing, you know, the uses of plastics in schools or some, something defined where, you know, we could have, you know, targeted goals to, to achieve. I know the electric buses in terms of reducing the carbon footprint are probably, you know, obviously a big initiative, big part of that. You know, I do, I do think, you know, a lot of the, the hard part's kind of been decided for us. We can't buy zero emission after 27. By 35, everything has to be electric. So, you know, my view, you know, it's really a matter of, you know, how we most economically and efficiently get, you know, our, our district and our fleet to, you know, 100% electric. So with that in mind, you know, are we maximizing state and federal aid and credits that might be available? Secondly, are we decommissioning the, the existing fleet in the most efficient way? Because I assume that over time, technology is going to get better and the prices is probably and the prices is probably going to come down. So I think we need to do it in a a the the most efficient way for the whole community. And then in terms of the two initiatives on the ballot, you know, I'm I'm for both of them. The capital reserve fund for the electric as well as the the bond. I think I do think that, I know there was some controversy there, but I do think we need to maintain some flexibility and insurance policy to keep the fleet running. Thanks.
Thank you. The question now goes to Kathy Connolly. Ms. Connolly, what ideas do you have for how to make the district more environmentally sustainable?
So one obvious area I would think is to exploring solar panels on our buildings or solar parking spaces. So that might be an area. I'm not sure how much research has gone into that. And then, obviously, it's not a new idea, but it goes back to the emission-free buses. That is a hot topic. And and like Greg said, it's it's not a matter of if we go to emission-free school buses, but when we go and how fast we get there. So as again, New York State is going to require a full switch over by twenty thirty-five. I was fortunate enough to meet with some members of Quoten 100 who are passionate about going full-fledged ahead with, you know, doing the electric buses or emission-free buses now, not waiting to the last minute. But I've also met with others that have stated concerns over moving so quickly. I did attend a webinar on Tuesday that went over the funds that eat the APA is allocating for emission-free buses for some districts. So there's going to be requirements attached to it and it's going to be done by a lottery. But if elected, I do look forward to digging in on the subject and making sure that we're doing everything we can do to get those funds to our district because it's so important. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're moving on to question number eight. It's kind of a scenario question. The question goes first to Mr. Oshiro. How would you respond to a parent trying to remove a particular book from our school libraries?
Well, as I, as I said at the outset, I think one of the most important things that a board member can and should do is to listen. And so I think first and foremost, I would listen to that parent. And I wouldn't speak, right? I would I would listen to everything that that parent had to say. And then I would also ask if they talked to the administration, right? To our librarians, our professional staff who live and breathe what books should be in our schools, who have, you know, dedicated their careers to understanding, right? What kind of materials should be in our schools? You know, from my own personal view, I believe that we need to open up the world to our children, right? We do ourselves no favors if we limit the amount of materials that or the kinds of materials that our young people have access to. So I I myself am very passionate about this issue. I think that we need to face our 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 history and our and and read every text that gives us a clear picture of our history so that we can move forward. And so I would have a conversation with that parent and our administration and 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 come to a solution together. But I I believe it's crucial to to come from a place of listening at the outset and collaboration.
Thank you. The question now goes to Mr. Burns. How would you respond to a parent trying to remove a particular book from our school libraries?
Yeah. So first, I mean, my my general default position is to not censor, not not ban ban books from from the schools. Like Theo said, I think, you know, controversial topics or what might be perceived as problematic books should not be banned. They should be understood, read and, you know, for what they are. But with with that in mind, I would obviously want to understand what the parent's perspective is, where they're coming from, why, why they think that. Maybe have a conversation on why maybe I I agree or disagree. Really just try to try to understand where they're where they're coming from. And I do, I I like this question because it could be, it's nonpartisan. Either both sides, I think, have have tried to eliminate books from schools. And but I I I think it's really a function of, you know, understanding and listening to them and taking that and maybe taking, moving from that conversation and, you know, going to to other sources to to kind of better fully understand it because, you know, one person's opinion doesn't necessarily make it so. So really trying to find a consensus and come to a good resolution for that parent.
Thank you. The question now goes to Ms. Connolly. How would you respond to a parent trying to remove a particular book from our school libraries?
Well, I would, I would find out who the appropriate people are to make those decisions about how a book gets removed. I don't know the process, but I would imagine that the librarian would play a role in this conversation. I am not a book banner, but I do not think that all books are appropriate for, especially for the young children. So I have experience with having a frustration with a book that my child, who was in seventh grade, was reading. And when I read the back of the book, it seemed like a very appropriate book. I said, oh, somebody who's having trouble growing up, you know, divorced parents and this could help that person. But when I opened it up, there was excessive profanity. And anybody can reach out to me privately and I will be happy to go over the other topics that came up in this graphic novel, but it was not appropriate for a seventh grader for my son to be asking questions of the words that were used in that book. I think our kids are growing up too fast and I assume that a fifth grader could have taken out that book. So I am not one to start demanding that books get taken out, but I can also understand the side of a parent that there's some topics that we have to understand. These are, these are still kids and I want my kids to stay as young as possible. And so certain materials, I think, are a little bit fast and racy for such a young age.
Thank you. The question now goes to Mr. Diamond. How would you respond to a parent trying to remove a particular book from our school libraries?
So the the first thing I would do is I would want to direct them, first of all, to speak to the teacher and speak to the librarian. These are people who are trained in pedagogy and whose job it is to understand what books might be appropriate at different age levels. And part of that is what's appropriate in terms of their reading ability. But part of that is also understanding what is appropriate for the student's level of emotional maturity. Books, when they're effective, books should not just leave us comfortable. Books should make us feel sometimes a little uncomfortable because that's when we could expand our horizons and understand the world. And yes, sometimes that might mean some salty language. Because you know what? In the real world, there is salty language. Now, there's policies that the district has about how to do this and procedures and anyone can look that up in the policy manual. So those are important things as well. But it's a matter of having that discussion with the book pros, which are teachers and librarians, and coming to an understanding. And I think that usually that will work out to a point where there's understanding of why that book is in the library and why it was perhaps a right decision. Or perhaps we'll learn more.
Thank you. I see Ms. Connolly, you'd like to rebut. You have thirty seconds.
Yes, I I understand. I I don't want to be too much of a prude. There's salty language out there. I get it. But I still think that these kids are faced with so much social media and kids having phones and seeing things at such a young age to push that even more in the books. I think there's, there's books, there's plenty of books out there to get certain messages across that can help children, that doesn't have to be so in their face. I I think there's other books that could to do the this next, that will help the children without being so racy. And again, my issue, I did not demand that the book was removed, but I voiced a concern over it.
Thank you. All right. Sorry, I was needed. We're gonna move on to question number nine. This question goes first to Mr. Burns. What is your perspective on DEI, diversity, equity, inclusion in our schools?
So I think diversity, equity, inclusion are are important goals that our district should definitely strive strive for, strive to achieve. I personally think that the best way to approach this is for a through a culture that celebrates our universal humanity. Everything that we share in common, the idea that we're all created equal. I think this is a more unifying than promoting, you know, identity group views, which I think ultimately end up being divisive. I I do recognize, like I've said previously on this call, that, you know, my opinion is not the only opinion on this matter. I have participated in the Equity Stakeholder Council meeting to really understand the various viewpoints on this topic. But I do think that if we're going to have the most constructive and lasting impact, we should be considering all perspectives within in the community. And right now, I think that the board is more one-sided. So that's part of the reason why I'm running to to bring a different point of view to the conversation. And then secondly, you know, I I think I think this is table stakes, but we we really should make sure that every student has the tools and resources that they need so that they are only limited by their ability and their desire to succeed.
Thank you. The question now goes to Ms. Connolly. What is your perspective on DEI, diversity, equity, and inclusion in our schools?
So I think we've done a good job of creating spaces for parents to come together and discuss these topics. I know from attending the cafe, the World Cafe at the high school and sitting in on some of the Equity Stakeholder meetings, it's caused me to have some reflection on how I see other people's experiences. I think we need to make sure that all children are starting from a place of equality and 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 playing on an even playing, playing on a level playing field and that every child has a sense of belonging and is feels that they're respected in the school system.
Thank you. The question now goes to Mr. Diamond. What is your perspective on DEI in our schools?
I think that we've started the work, but I think that there is still a lot of work to be done. We know that there are still far too many students in our district who report that they feel judged by their peers or disadvantaged based upon their ethnic background, their, the color of their skin, the the way their hair is or or their religious background or any one of a number of different identifying characteristics, like gender or sexual orientation. So we have work to do there. And in order to do that work, we need to do more than just remove impediments. We need to understand that there are historical reasons why those inequities exist and we need to respect them. We need to understand that where some students are coming from may not be where other students are coming from and they need to know that their story, their individual story, their family story is respected and honored in order for them to have made, as one of my fellow candidates said, the table stakes.
Thank you. The question now goes to Mr. Oshiro. What is your perspective on DEI in our schools?
Well, there's nothing that I care about more than than this issue in our schools. You know, I I mentioned the the work of the Equity Stakeholder Team that I think was admirable and brave and really a true collaboration between parents and all the professionals that make up our school district. And I think it's crucial that we build upon, that we not only see it through and make sure it's implemented well on both the short term and the long term goals, but also that we are doing even more to build on that, that we are continuing to talk to our students directly about how they feel in our schools. And I think that the conversation around, these conversations need to involve conversations about identity. You know, this idea that identity-based ideologies are divisive. No, they're not. Identity is something that we all have and to pretend that we are all exactly the same is is just not useful. We need to uplift the uniqueness of each of our children and understand that inequities actually exist and need to be addressed. And we don't get there by taking a an approach that upholds a status quo. So I want to make sure that I lead on this issue on the board and that I work with others to lead on this issue. The state has already laid out a framework, framework called the CRS Framework that upholds that our young people are agents of social change. And to get to social change, they need to understand and talk about their identities and how they feel in their schools as a as a crucial piece that is uplifted by our teachers, by administrators and the board.
Thank you. Okay, so now we're gonna move on to question number ten. This question goes to Ms. Connolly first. What do you think is the board's role in influencing how teachers talk about sensitive subjects in the classroom?
I'm not sure it is the board's role to get too insinuate gritty about what the teachers are getting into. We have to be careful that we're not stepping into the teacher's role and and micromanaging their classroom. But I think it comes back to what is the, what is our vision and our policy and our goals? And I think that would probably go into vision of where we want the school district to go. So I think if parents are coming and and saying things to the board that there's sensitive issues that are coming up, I think it's our job, I would imagine, and you'll have to excuse me, I'm getting my roles together, that the superintendent then would have conversations if there's enough complaints that things are inappropriately being said in the classroom. So I'm not sure, I think that would probably fall under the purview of the superintendent. But again, it comes back to our vision and goals and and we have to be careful not to get too deep in the weeds in what the teachers are doing on a daily basis. But I think everyone's voice and every parent's voice is important to step up if they have strong concerns about what is being said and to share that with anybody who'll listen, board superintendent, except principals.
Thank you. The question now goes to Mr. Diamond. What do you think is the board's role in influencing how teachers talk about sensitive subjects in the classroom?
I I think the most sensitive subject that many teachers would want to get forward to all of the members of their classes is to get them to pay attention in class and getting them to study. More seriously, Policy forty-eight-ten governs teaching about controversial issues. It's very specific. It explicitly recognizes that students have to study controversial issues as an integral part of learning effective citizenship. It recognizes the student's right to study any controversial issue upon which they may develop an opinion, have access to all the relevant information about it, study under competent instruction in an unbiased atmosphere and form and express their own opinions on controversial issues without jeopardizing the relationship with their teacher or their school. Under that policy, students are expected to recognize that reasonable compromise and alignment is often an important element of decision-making in our society, just as it is on our board. And we're, they're expected to respect the opinions of others, even if they disagree, but eventually hopefully come into alignment. I I don't see any reason to make changes in that policy. I think it's worked well for us for many years. It was originally adopted in nineteen ninety-four and I I think really that's the way to proceed here.
Thank you. Okay, the question now goes to Mr. Oshiro. What do you think is the board's role in influencing how teachers talk about sensitive subjects in the classroom?
You know, I I really start from a place of, you know, trusting our our professional staff in the schools, right? And and understanding that they've been, in for in many cases, teaching a lot longer than than, you know, than any of us have, right? And so they really understand how to talk about sensitive subjects in our schools. And, you know, I I I think, of course, the 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 board can be a sounding board for the administration and the and the staff that actually focus on these issues. I also think that often, you know, what we talk about, when we talk about sensitive subjects, you know, we're really kind of talking about things that are just hard to talk about, right? And 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 hard for adults, hard for young people. And learning involves discomfort, right? Learning and understanding, you know, our 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 history as a country or, you know, the way our world works and, you know, our society works and sometimes is is hard to to understand and 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 sometimes is is hard to to understand and 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 hard to deal with. And so these are things that I think necessarily need to be part of learning because we face that every day, right? As as grownups, right, in this world, right, like we understand that we grapple with a lot of hard stuff and that we need to make decisions and be compassionate people, you know, despite all of the hard things and to really change the hard thing. So I really believe that I would be a supporter as a Board of Education member in supporting our administration to to create spaces to have hard conversations.
Thank you. The question now goes to Mr. Burns. What do you think is the board's role in influencing how teachers talk about sensitive subjects in the classroom?
Yeah, so obviously, there's policies and parameters in place to to have these conversations, but I do think there the board's role is more from an oversight and accountability perspective, making making sure the guardrails of acceptability and how these topics are addressed for the parents are maintained. You know, I think parents need to be, you know, kept abreast of what what is being taught, how is being taught, and why it's being taught in the schools. And the board should be, you know, that go between to to the to the parents and the administration to voice their concerns if they feel that a topic is not being covered either appropriately, age appropriately, or in a fair and balanced way.
Thank you. Okay, we are going to move on to question eleven. And this question goes first to Mr. Diamond. The community has many children with a variety of backgrounds, experiences, and needs. How will you ensure that all of these children see themselves represented in their learning experiences and materials?
Well, I think the first thing we need to understand is to know all of the kids. Every kid in our district, every student needs to have a teacher, faculty member, a staff member, who really understands who they are, who has taken the time to establish relationship with that student. Now, I understand that might mean an increase in the amount of staff that's involved in each student or in each class, because it's a lot to know. But knowing that provides the foundation, that provides the way to learn as a teacher how to best support that student and how to honor and respect their heritage, their unique situation, their identity, and support them as they need so that that identity isn't an impediment to their success, but is actually a support for their success. They will will succeed because we're meeting them not where we want them to be, but meeting them where they are now and bringing them to where they could be. If everything were i- if they were able to achieve their goals as they dreamed them.
Thank you. The question now goes to Mr. Oshiro. The community has many children with a variety of backgrounds, experiences, and needs. How will you ensure that all these children see themselves represented in their learning experiences and materials?
I mean, I think it goes back to, you know, our previous conversation around access to materials, right? I think I firmly firmly believe that our students must have access to as many materials and texts as possible, right, so that it can inform their thinking and they can become critical thinkers and good thinkers, right? And 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 I think that's just a crucial piece of of how we need to support our our students to see themselves in their education. You know, I was also on a on a in a session last night of SEPTA, right, the 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 Special Education PTA and and you know, the conversation really around the parental support that's needed to make sure that our students with with special needs are able to thrive in our in our in our district, right? I think it's crucial that we have a partnership with parents, administrators, and everyone really that touches the district, in particular, when we're talking about young people with with special needs. And I also think that, you know, we need to continue to invest in professional education, right? It it is crucial that our teachers, right, continue to learn and develop their own skills and how you include all students of different backgrounds, of different ability levels, et cetera, right, into the classroom. We have a great tradition of inclusive education, right, in our district, and I want to be able to build on that through things like professional education and and, you know, access to to materials and texts and building on all of the work that the D I committee has done as well.
Thank you very much. The question now goes to Mr. Burns. The community has many children of a variety of backgrounds, experiences, and needs. How will you ensure that all these children see themselves represented in their learning experiences and materials?
I I mean, I think you know, when you look at our country as a whole, it's really the the idea that the melting pot, we celebrate everyone's culture, and we come together under that kind of common American banner, but that is what it's all about. And I think we'd be doing all all our students a disservice if we're not providing them with what, you know, I just consider a nice, strong, well-rounded, diverse curriculum that brings in the elements of all the different cultures that make up our our diverse community. So, you know, I I think you have to make sure, like I was looking through the the high school reading list, you know, leading up to this, and you could see the diverse elements in there, and obviously, you know, maybe there's, we could look and at areas like that where maybe we some groups aren't as represented and, you know, bring in, you know, great novels from from other perspectives, other other communities, but really, it shouldn't shouldn't change the anything about, you know, what we're trying to accomplish, just provide a great education. And if we could bring in great elements from other cultures to to supplement our our curriculum, all the better.
Thank you. The question is now from Ms. Connolly. The community has many children of a variety of backgrounds, experiences, and needs. How will you ensure that all these children see themselves represented in their learning experiences and materials? Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Connolly, you're muted.
Sorry. I I think it's so important that every child is looked at on an individual basis. So we can't look to a sea of children and and maybe speak to Bobby the same as Suzie, because they're all coming from a varied background. So we need to understand, and I know I know that might be difficult because the teachers have limited time in their day to delve, you know, deep, and you want to protect people's privacies, but we have to do what we can to really understand what each child is coming to school with, what background experience. And we need to make sure that they're that they're working on a level playing field with their counterparts. Part of this also goes back to emotional and social, well, you know, emotional learning. So, you know, if if they're they're coming from a different place, and they and it's about having that emotional and social umbrella there and and network of of people to help them through that. So I I do think it's a priority to make sure that we are really understanding what each kid is bringing and how to reach in and pull out and make sure that they're living up to their best and fullest potential.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to go to our final question, and then following that, of course, we'll do closing statements. So the final question goes first to Mr. Oshiro. The budget process requires the district to set priorities. How do you achieve a balance among arts, athletics, and academic excellence?
Great question. You know, I have a lot of experience in managing budgets. I I run and manage a thirty two million dollar budget in my organization. And I'm used to doing things like building reserves and ensuring financial health, but also in investing in people and community programs, right, and making hard decisions and doing the fundraising to bring in additional resources and advocating for state resources. And budgeting is and those decisions are one of the most important responsibilities of the B O E. It touches every aspects of our students' lives. And really, the initiatives that we're talking about, academics, learning, et cetera, only work if we put real resources into those into those initiatives. So I really believe in an investment, right? Obviously, definitely in fiscal health and making sure that our budget is healthy and strong, but also making sure that we're putting real dollars behind things like, you know, the implementation of professional development, you know, investing in our teachers, providing extra support to our students, you know, electrifying our fleet, right, like all of these things cost money. And we have to look at the big picture and, of course, make hard decisions, but ultimately be bold, right, and and do everything possible to resource the work that's going to impact our young people.
Thank you. The question now goes to Mr. Burns. The budget process requires the district to set priorities. How do you achieve a balance among arts, athletics, and academic excellence?
Yes, I I I think that you know, it's not a either or, there's no mutually exclusive kind of elements here. You just have to strike the right balance between between maximizing the return in each of those areas, whether it's academics and the arts and athletics are equally as important. I think they they are additive to the overall school experience, so they should definitely be considered, but I think you have to balance wants versus needs. Look at where we're going to get the the most return in each of those areas with the the money we're spending. Do it in a fiscally responsible way that, you know, minimizes the the impact on the tax levy and keeps the the district in in good financial shape. So I think it's really just a matter of prioritizing finding finding the areas that are are most important to the to the district, to the community, will have the biggest impact and taking it from there.
Thank you. The question now goes to Ms. Connolly. The budget process requires the district to set priorities. How do you achieve a balance among arts, athletics, and academic excellence?
Well, this is probably one of the more difficult areas. I I will tell you that fiscal responsibility in our household is a is a big topic. So we are constantly talking to our children about never taking on debt now. But I understand that running a household is different than running a school system, so I think a lot of it comes down to communication and public reach out and really trying to get people to communicate the district members of what their wants are. So you know, I know that there's sports facilities that are the Booster Club wants to have sports facilities upgraded. Theater at the high school that is needs or wants to be upgraded. So I think it's, again, it goes back to striking that balance and really listening to the the needs and wants of the of the schools, but also the community and the taxpayers. Everybody shares a responsibility in voicing their opinion, because if people don't speak up about what's important to them, then the board won't know. So yeah, communication.
Thank you. The question now goes to Mr. Diamond. The budget process requires the district to set priorities. How do you achieve a balance among arts, athletics, and academic excellence?
So there's really two major parts of of a school budget. There's the capital part, and there's the operating budget. So I want to talk about operating budget first. The largest portion of the operating budget for our school district and pretty much any school district is the cost of academic services, teachers, retirement funds for teachers. That is the largest component of of the operating budget by far. And it gives us relatively little flexibility because we have a curriculum that we've agreed upon that is developed as part of our strategic coherence plan and developed over the course of years and is also driven by state mandates and by state, you know, what colleges are expecting and what students are expecting to have when they graduate, and that really drives academics. Athletics are adjunct to that in that a healthy, you know, you're not going to be a healthy student if you don't have a healthy body, and athletics helps that. Similarly, for arts, the avenues for creativity are critically important. So we need to look at those as well. And at the same time, through our capital budget, which is voted on each year by the taxpayers when they approve or disapprove bonds, that allows us to decide on facilities improvements to support academics, to support athletics, for instance, a a turf field, or to support the arts in the form of improved theater facilities.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes question and answer. We will now move to closing statements, which will be given in the reverse order of opening statements. So the first person to give a closing statement is Mr. Burns. And remember, closing statements are one minute.
Okay, I won't need that long. Just thanks. Thanks, everyone, for participating, listening in, asking and submitting questions. So as a community that I I think obviously values diversity, I hope you'll consider voting for me on May seventeenth. I think I'll bring a different perspective to the board that I think will make it more inclusive and reflective of the viewpoints of all families in in the community. And I'm confident that we can come together to find common ground that will result in better outcomes for all of our children. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we now move to Ms. Connolly. You have one minute for your closing.
I'd like to thank all the people that have helped me on this journey, on this run for the school board. I could not have done it without you. The support has meant everything. I appreciate all of the people who have agreed to meet and speak with me over the last month. I, of course, want to thank my husband and kids for putting up with me. And again, I started this journey to get a better connection with our community and to learn what's going on in our schools and and to lend a voice. And I I stand for first and foremost, providing our our district, I stand for the the district needs to focus on strong academics, and that's really what comes first. We need to address what the pandemic has done to the decline in in education. And we need to make sure that no child is slipping through the cracks and just getting by, but living up to their full potential. And we're sending graduates off into the world who are productive and hopefully kind members of society. So I look forward to working with board as as a team and providing that.
Thank you. Okay, we now move to Mr. Oshiro. You have one minute for your closing.
Thank you, Leah. I'm running for the board because I'm passionate about helping people. In fact, it's what I've devoted my whole life to. In my day job, I work every day to make real and lasting change within daunting systems. And I understand how to manage large budgets, how to listen to people and harness their leadership, how to work with existing policies and laws to achieve far ranging change. And I know that facing difficult and uncomfortable realities is often part of that journey. I want to be your voice on the board because I know that we have big challenges ahead of us and so many opportunities. The strategic and capital planning processes, a passionate and hungry administration, teachers who thrive at nurturing our young people in an already strong public school tradition with many involved parents and youth. I know we can work together to make our school district even better. I hope I have your vote on May seventeenth. Thank you.
Thank you. And now we go to Mr. Diamond. You have one minute for your closing.
As I said before, our students, our schools already provide students with a meaningful and excellent education. And there's evidence of that in the form of great rankings and a ninety seven percent scorecard from U S News and World Report and in the paths that our students take after graduation. So now's not the time to make radical changes to our program, nor is it time to rest on our laurels. Rather, it is time to lean in, to work hard to expand academic success to an even broader, more diverse cohort of students. It's time to revise our existing effective plans to ensure that they bring opportunity to every student in ways that support their unique heritage and their unique promise. It's time to foster brilliance, however it may be expressed. It's time to build excellence, to grow success, to foster creativity, to think critically and to build the future by preparing well-rounded, well-prepared, and happy students. It's time to prepare them not for the world that was, but rather for the world that will be. I hope that you'll vote on May seventeen and select me to be a board member in this district again.
Thank you. All right, that concludes our forum. The school board election and budget vote will take place on Tuesday, May seventeenth. Your polls are open from six A M. to nine P M. at the high school. The forum was recorded and links to it will be available on the school district website and the River Towns League website, which is L W V dash River towns dot org. Thank you to the River Towns League, the Crotein Harmon P T A, all the candidates, wish all of you luck. And everyone who attended, I hope you all have a nice evening. Have a good night. Bye bye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Susan.